Do they give us, I don't think this makes any difference to the decisions we make with regard to whether to have an election or not. But when they give us an estimate early, where does that come from? And educate me about how it can be a couple hundred thousand dollars different by the end?
Well, it comes from the staff at the registrar recorders. And when they do give us the estimate, they clearly say, "This is an estimate. This is only an estimate. We haven't analyzed all of our expenses." And so they are trying to give us, I would say, their best estimated guess at what it's going to be. But until they get all of their bills in and finalize everything, they don't really know the true value of the proportionate share that each entity is required to reimburse them for.
And my second question on this is, has there ever been a time when the county registrar voters have said, "Oops, we goofed up. Here's some money back"?
Not to my knowledge. Okay, thank you.
I wonder what accountability they, I mean, are we able to question? Is it worth it?
We can. I mean, it's not entirely out of the ballpark. You know, $50,000 isn't hugely out of the ballpark. I think there was greater turnout than they had originally anticipated. So I'm not quite sure how they come up with their costs.
How does the amount of turnout affect it?
It kind of comes down to a cost per registered voter within your particular district.
Okay, trustee Zia.
It just sounds like that should be agendas for a later time for an explanation, just for what it's worth. Since you brought up the point about codifying travel expenditures on the commercial warrants, and please understand that I'm not trying to be difficult or give allergic reactions to board members on this board, some of them. But where is this travel expenditures of the board codified on this commercial warrants? Can you please help me understand that?
I think what I had said was, when the reimbursement to what we call the revolving cash fund exceeds 25,000, it's codified. So it was an example. It wasn't, I wasn't trying to say, and I apologize if I didn't communicate that appropriately, that it's on today's agenda. It has been on past agendas. And I know we have asked the question in the past of what that was for. It is not on today's agenda.
Right, but it's only if it were to be exceeded. So if it was not exceeded, the board has no visibility on what that travel expenditure is, correct?
Correct. But under this particular item for commercial warrants, the board is ratifying the issuance of, you know, $8,555,000 of warrants. Within that 8.6 million dollars, there are travel expenses in there.
Right, embedded somewhere that we don't, it's not delineated. Thank you, I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you trustee Zia. Okay, should we call for the vote?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Thank you, and aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, excellent. Now we're at 7.1 new certificates and degrees academic senate.
So moved.
Second.
One second.
Okay, moved by trustee Zia, seconded by trustee Otto. Any questions? Okay.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, great. 7.2, thank you. New modified and activated courses.
Second.
Trustee Zia, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, moved by trustee Zia, seconded by trustee Otto. Any questions?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Okay, 8.1 revised board policy and administrative regulation 7007, prevention reporting and campus security.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Zia, seconded by trustee Malauulu.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Question, please? I would like to take into consideration the comments that were made by the two faculty members regarding these issues. One regarding being proactive in the classroom in terms of the hiring practice. I apologize, I'm not really familiar where that would fall in terms of the jurisdiction of our vice presidents. If you can enlighten me, that would be great. And also, it is alarming to not be able to lock your door from the inside. As a classroom teacher for 20-plus years, I've never taught in a classroom where I had to go outside and lock it. I can't imagine having to do that. And that it's happening on this campus is alarming. So whichever VP can speak to that and let us know what we need to do, if that needs to be something that we need to address some other format, I would really appreciate that.
I have a feeling, oh, can you answer this?
Yes, so to your first question about hiring the additional staff, the way...
Sorry, I don't think it's additional. I don't mean to interrupt you. I don't think Janey Hunt's comments were additional staff. I think it was staff that had certain qualifications in that background. So maybe, I don't think that that's like an agenda item or something that we need to do. I think it's something to be mindful of in the future. But I don't think it's, you know, we need to hire more people.
I think she did say that.
She did, oh, sorry. I just saw it in writing. I apologize. I, maybe I did not hear that portion of her statement, but I definitely heard about more qualified.
Right. Dr. Peterson, do you want to answer the?
Yep. So I believe that she was referring to our mental health clinician for our psychological services. And we have been making strides in that area. We used to have just a part-time counselor. We now have a full-time position in addition to part-time counseling. That's an area that we are trying to continue to grow by trying to leverage the student health fees as an avenue to be able to increase that. It's something we're very aware of. There are also a lot of resources at the state level that are provided that we have, we're trying to really tap into as well.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Kellogg?
I think...
So to answer your second question about locking from inside, we are currently underway with what we're calling a door lockdown project. That started, I want to say, three weeks ago. And we are, in the first phase, we're hitting buildings A, C, D, L, T, V, AA, BB, DD, EE, GG, and LL. The reason that we selected those are those are the most highly populated buildings that we have. Once we get those buildings retrofitted, then we're already under the process of trying to take an inventory and do the accounting so that we can do the lockdown project for the remaining buildings. All new buildings that are being constructed will have the lockdown capabilities for the rooms that have five or more people in them. So it is something that is currently underway, and we are making progress on that.
How long?
For all those buildings that I named, the anticipated completion is spring of 2017. And they are doing the work at nighttime to try to minimize the impact to the classes.
Oh, that's, I think that's a very good timeline.
And the cost? Is that under bond?
It is under bond. No, actually, I apologize. We are using scheduled maintenance funds for this, so it's coming out of the capital fund. And I don't, my folks aren't here. I want to say it's around $500,000, but I don't remember exactly. It's in that ballpark for this first phase. And then we still have to do the second phase. The other buildings in the second phase are much older buildings, and it's going to be much more difficult to retrofit those. So what we're having to do is take an inventory door by door of what type of locking mechanism currently exists, and can it be retrofitted? Or do we have to change it out entirely? Because what we want to make sure that we're doing is abiding by accessibility guidelines. You know, a lot of districts are just going in and putting little plastic locks in there, which goes against fire code as well as accessibility that states that you have to be able to exit with just one maneuver. So we're making sure that as we're doing it, we are going to be complying with the ADA code as well as fire code.
Just a piece of history. Years ago, they locked, I was always against this. If, at like 10 minutes after the hour, the teacher would lock the door. And these are in the old buildings, so I'm surprised there isn't that capability, but maybe, yeah. This is a long time ago.
Yeah.
I was philosophically against it, but a lot of teachers did it. Trustee Kellogg?
No, just, it was some good points came up, and Greg brought it up already, about the demand that we have now with student issues, especially in those areas. Because community colleges now with liability issues, the fact that it is becoming more, much more prominent, or at least publicized, that we have to address those issues, and therefore we have to start shifting funds over there. And this started, I remember when this discussion started, I think, years ago. So you're starting to see things being addressed like that. And ironically, with the locking mechanism, one of the things that came up much earlier, regardless of how faculty members felt, is the concern was, what if you had somebody on campus that could secure a room and you can't get in there? So in other words, the person you don't want in the room is in your room, and nobody can get in that room to help you. So it was interesting how, to that issue and this issue from security, how the things we are discussing today, how it's evolved and the challenges we have. So good questions, but it's interesting. We never would have thought we would have this discussion years ago, but here we are.
President Baxter, I have a question.
Yes, trustee Zia.
Thank you. I'd like to echo trustee Malauulu's points and the faculty's points. It worries me that people feel unsafe, you know, teaching. I, that's like basic, fundamental things that we have to provide, and I'm glad we're taking strides to do that. I know we have the cameras that were, it's intended to observe and record. It may not necessarily be surveillance on a real-time basis, is my understanding. And it's also my understanding that on December 5th, there was a strong-arm robbery of a student on PCC campus, her cellphone. They got in the car, they went after her, and they strong-armed her. And this was a journalism student, from my understanding. Are we monitoring these? And then, because I know we bought the cameras a while back, and we approved the purchase, if I recall correctly. Where are we at with the monitoring and surveillance or observations and potentially finding the suspects?
Well, the construction project for the video surveillance project has begun, again, about three weeks ago. We started both of the projects about the same time. So they are currently in the beginning phases of that, to where they're at the PCC campus, and they are laying the fiber for the cameras. So we are still a few months out before we're going to have cameras on either campus. And the plan is to do the Pacific Coast campus first, and then move over to the liberal arts campus. But that project is on schedule as planned, and they are moving forward with that. As far as the investigation, that is a police investigation, and so I don't have an answer on where we are with that. The strong-arm robbery actually happened at the bus stop. It wasn't on campus. It's adjacent to the campus, but it was not on the campus. The suspects did run onto campus after they did do the strong-arm robbery.
So under this policy where it says, "Maintain a video surveillance system that can be used to investigate alleged crimes and/or incidents occurring on campus," does it have a coverage area that extends to the vicinity or near, close by the campus so we can have some coverage?
Right. If you recall, when we did the construction update, I guess it was back in June now, so it has been a few months for the board, we had the picture of the coverage. And I would say 99% of both of the campuses are covered. What our intent is, is for all of the entrances and exits to buildings and the entrances to our parking lots will have the capability for facial and/or license plate recognition. The other areas will be covered, but you won't be able to get the facial or license plate recognition. So had the cameras been in place since the suspect fled into the parking lot, we probably would have been able to capture the license plate on the vehicle, which would help the police investigation.
Okay, have the vote, please.
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say that.
Aye.
Thank you. Somebody was coughing.
Okay, 9.1 revised salary schedule classifications exempt from the merit system?
So moved.
Okay, I'm not sure who said it first. So, okay, he's deferring to you, trustee Zia, and seconded by trustee Otto. Are there questions? Okay, call for the vote.
Virginia Baxter. Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Aye.
9.2 district initial bargaining proposal?
Excuse me, President, hold on.
Oh.
It didn't take the last one.
Sorry.
Thank you.
It says absent.
9.2. You are absolutely right. Is someone going to speak on this?
Yes, this is AFT's proposal to the district, their initial bargaining proposal. We, per contract, are required to bring this forward in the month of December, and we will begin negotiations in spring. So this is the sunshining proposal. The board won't take action on this until the next board meeting.
May I ask a maybe stupid question? Has the AFT changed their name to CFT?
No, it's just CFT, that's not right.
Pardon me?
You're correct, that's not right.
No, it was not a typo. I was informed the name was changed. So is it not changed, or is it changed?
I think perhaps we're talking FA.
Yeah.
Faculty Association, that was changed.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. 9.3, the...
And this is, in regards to 9.3, this is the district's proposal to the union, which will also go forward for approval in January. And again, will allow for us to go forward with negotiations in the spring.
Aren't these two the same?
No.
Okay, okay. Well, let's go on. Thank you. 10.1 academic senate president. Thank you. 10.2 superintendent president.
Madam Chair, excuse me. I think we should note that in the consent agenda, our new acting superintendent president was approved.
That's right.
Just prior to her making her first report. I think we need to acknowledge that and congratulate her.
Well, thank you. That was going to be my first comment, was to thank the board for the confidence that you have shown in me to lead our organization forward on this interim or acting basis through June 30th. I am really looking forward to working with the board, with the faculty, with the classified, really with the college, and trying to change my perspective somewhat, to have a broader perspective and kind of wear a different hat. So I am truly looking forward to that. I am humbled and honored, like I said last time. So thank you very much. And my hope and goal is that at the end of this, it will make me a stronger vice president, that I can continue serving the district in that capacity. So thank you for that. As far as a report, I will say that it is finals week. As our ASB president mentioned, they had their cram night. So our students are tired and cranky. Our faculty may be tired and cranky as well. It seems like towards the end of the semester, everybody gets tired and cranky. And right now, we're having holiday cheer parties all over the place, which is good, because I think it is bringing everyone together, and we are getting to celebrate on that. We have our winter session that's starting on January 3rd. Right now, the enrollments look about on target of what we were hoping for. Each day, it seems that it's ticking up a little bit more. And then just to get it on your calendars a little bit early, if it's not already there, we are planning the state of the college for February 3rd. So I will be looking forward to that event, as well as in the capacity of the acting superintendent president. I think I might enjoy it much more being in the audience, but I'm already gearing up for that one. So that concludes my report.
Very good, thank you. Student trustee, I did not forget you, 10.3.
Thanks, I didn't know it was finals week. So, yeah. Thank you all for having the longest meeting I've attended during finals week. Appreciate it. No, but it was, there was a lot of great discussion today. I do want to remind you all that although we won't be continuing our ASB meetings throughout the winter session, work will still be done. Myself and some of the ASB cabinet will be working on projects like the Long Beach Transit negotiations, some more civic engagement, impact efforts here at the college to inform students of their rights and their abilities to involve themselves both civically and within the community as well. And then I recently attended a meeting in regards to the passage of a bill, Senate Bill 1995. And I asked to attend that meeting in regards to the proposals that were going to be discussed about, well, in regards to shower facilities for homeless students. And time and time again, I'm always privileged to attend these meetings, because I really understand that our administration here really cares about students. And one of the highlights of that meeting was that we took away the idea of providing this service from only, or to only homeless students, and to really prioritizing a service for all students. And that's something that I'm always reminded of and privileged to hear time and time again. I'll never get tired of hearing that, because our students come first. And again, it was just, it was exciting to be there. So work will still be done. We'll be having some things, again, January 27th and sometime in February for leadership development and professional development for our ASB cabinet. But we're excited and cranky, and looking forward to the end of another great semester. Thanks.
Very good. If I can tell you, when we were in Riverside for the league conference, several students were there, and they said, "Long Beach, you have Alejandro Omeley." And I said, "I'm not going to tell them you said nice things about him," but they did. So you are known everywhere. Very good. 10.4 trustees. I'm getting, well, anyway. Malauulu, trustee Malauulu.
Thank you, thank you. Alejandro would like to apologize to you. I know you have to go home and study for finals, but this is probably my longest report yet. I know, but it's going to be good. I've got some good stuff and some not-so-good stuff. And I'm going to up my trustee game, and I've employed the support of Myra there. We're going to try to put some visuals on here. I've been wanting to do this for some time. So it's been a busy month since our last meeting on November 8th. Shortly after, I was able to attend a lecture by Luis Cinco. In case you don't know who he is, he's a photojournalist, and he's famous for the Marlboro Man, the Marine that he was able to document. And if you've ever seen this photograph, this, you know, the man who took that photo was on our campus, and he did a documentary on his following the Marines, and he was able to share that. And there were several students there, and there were several veterans, and it was just an awesome experience for our students. That weekend, I was able to host a great project that I was working with, with our geography classes. And then we employed one of our TV film students, and we went out to the LA River, which happens to be in my district, Area 2. And these are some of our geography students who are doing a project for their class. This weekend was their last class, but they were working on land use and changes in the geography of urban cities, and that was led by Dr. Ray Sumner. And then you've got a film student documenting it on the other side of the camera. And I was really excited about that, because that happened in my district. Fast forward to a couple of events that I was able to attend representing the district. The City of Lakewood Heroes luncheon, which was my first time attending with trustee Baxter. That evening, the volleyball game, which was painful, painful. Our volleyball team did an awesome job against El Camino College, but it just, oh, man, it was a clutch situation. And then early the next morning, we took off to Riverside for the CCLC conference. When we got back from the conference, we were at the football game, the bowl game. And it was just really neat to go from one thing to another. Like I said, it was really busy. At the end of November, the Journalism Department, the Viking Office, had a very special send-off for Eloy. I think he's had about 4,263 going-away parties. And, you know, we were probably the first ones to send him off. And we did name, I keep saying "we" because it's just in my DNA, but we did name our head-of-the-class awards after Eloy. That was a decision that the students made. I was really impressed by their leadership there. And then that same week, there were two student life award banquets, the Viking Awards, another party for Eloy at Molina, a community send-off. And then the next day, we were, we did a ribbon cutting. It was not my first ribbon cutting, but it was my first LBCC ribbon cutting in honor of the Temple family and their contribution. There was also the NAACP banquet, and I'm going to speak a little bit about banquets at the end of my report, that I attended on behalf of LBCC. And then it was holiday parade season on the 3rd. All of the trustees, several of the president's ambassadors, a lot of staff members were there at the, no, go back, you had it right, the first one. There you go. We were at the Belmont Short Parade, our cheerleaders were there. It was a lot of fun. My family had a good time. Last week, shortly after the parade, I attended a personal first. I've been to a lot of parties before, but I've never been to a party in honor of a building. The P Building is closing due to renovation. That's where the Journalism Office is. And we had a party, complete with a tour and cake. Have you ever been to a party in honor of a building? So instead of an open house, it was a closing house. And then I finally, finally, had my last tour and meeting with the vice president. It was Ann Marie Gabel. At the time, she was our VP. She's since moved on. And I got my tour of PCC, which we had on the agenda since like June, July, August, September. We kept having to reschedule. And I was sick that morning, and I was like, "I am not rescheduling this. It's going to happen now or never." Also, that same week, I attended the Board of Governors Dinner at the Home of the Greens, which is a really nice event, lovely home for the foundation. And then we went to the Daisy Lane Parade. And as you can see, trustee Otto and I represented LBCC. We had a couple of students with us and a couple staff members. And again, I'm going to speak about parades in just a second. And then last night, I had the great honor of swearing in one of our Personnel Commissioners to his official first term, which was a first full term. He was, had been appointed to a second, a partial term. So that was really nice. So that's as far as what I've been doing. I think there may have been a couple of things. I also attended, on the PCC campus, the student life award ceremony there. And I would just like to comment that it was, the theme was steampunk. And I believe that was on the last Thursday. What was that, the 8th? The 6th? I don't remember the date, but, no, Tuesday, the 6th. And the steampunk theme was really nice, because it was in the hangar. So it was a very suitable location. So now, that's all the things that I've been doing and really getting a joy in being a part of all of these festivities. Not as a faculty member, I attended so many of these before, just because my students are a part of it. But now, as a trustee, it's a very different culture. So now I'm going to talk about a couple of things that I think we can do better. Number one, two events that I attended this last few weeks, the Lakewood Heroes Luncheon and then the NAACP Dinner. I know we pay for those tables. I know the foundation... I know the foundation pays for the tables, wherever, whoever, whoever pays for those tables, I would just like to make it a point that we fill those seats. It's embarrassing to me to sit at a table of 10 with only two or three people on it, and have seven or eight seats go empty, not only because of the waste of food and the waste of money, but also because we need to be a little more representative, and we need to roll a little deeper, if I may use a little street word. But, we have to make an effort as a college to make sure that those seats are filled. I just don't want to attend another event, even if we have more people than the table allows, because there are always seats available. Even if we invite 12 people, and, you know, 10 show up, we just have to make an effort. I hate the thought of all that food and money going to waste, when we've got so many hungry students. We've got faculty members, staff members, the events are not generally far, so please, let's make an effort to fill those seats. Also, regarding the parade participation, I was really disappointed, and I understand that people are busy, and they have commitments, and they have families, but I was very disappointed that the only person who was in the Daisy Lane Parade was trustee Otto. I know trustee Kellogg did make an appearance. He was there at the beginning, but he had a family commitment to attend. But, considering the numbers that I gave you earlier today, thanks to my math, 8,500 of our students live in that part of town, and even though it's not as fancy or as ritzy as the parade route along Belmont Shore, that's a lot more aesthetically appealing, you know, the west side is the west side, and we do have a lot of students and faculty who live there. And I was very disappointed that our other trustees and staff members, and our cheerleaders, and our other groups on campus, were not able to juggle their schedule. It's a much shorter parade route, the time is a lot less. It started at 5:00. I was done by 6:15. We were, we were done. So, you know, the fact that we only had two people that took, you know, two hours, let's say, of their day to represent in, you know, on the west side, was a little disheartening for me, and I would just encourage everyone to just make it a point to participate next year. And you'd be surprised at how many people would recognize you, because there's so many of them that attend our college. On the same note, I would also like to just share, and I know this needs a little more research, and I want to hear more about it, and I think it's going to become an agenda item, but I've heard some concerns from some of our students regarding some shared governance issues on campus with the hiring of dean, and also with some veterans issues. I'm in the, in the mix, and I do understand that there are two sides to every story. I get that, but it seems like every side I'm going to is telling a very similar version. So, it's a, it's a matter of concern for me that I would like to address, and when we get to the next agenda item, I will request some action on that, on the agenda. And then, I would just like to give two thank-yous. Last, a year ago this time, I was teaching a class, and I had a student in my class who had had a baby in the middle of August, and school started the end of August, and I noticed telltale signs, some stains on her blouse, and as a mom of four, I knew what they were, and I pulled her to the side, and I said, "Hey, you know, are you okay? You just had a baby?" And she says, "Yes, I'm nursing, I don't have anywhere to go." And, that prompted some questions about where she could go to feed her baby, if her husband brought the baby to campus, which my husband did lots of times when I was a new mom, or if she can go express breast milk. And I had spoken to Vice President Gable at the time, to see if there was a facility where new moms could go and take care of this need. And, in my tour of the PCC campus last week, and after calls and discussion, I was informed that both health centers on campus, LAC and PCC, actually provide a room just for that. And I was so impressed by that, and I really wish I had known or done more research a year ago, but we need to make that known, and I'd like to request that that be added to our catalog, somewhere where we list, you know, transgender restrooms, somewhere where we list points of information for our students. If we could please mention in there that we do have a place where new moms can go and take care of their needs in terms of expressing breast milk or feeding their infant. I also found out that the Health Center offers additional facilities for other needs students might have as well. So, kudos and thank you to them. And the last one is, I've been bugging Eloy for months to have at least one board meeting on the PCC campus. So, I was thrilled last night when I saw at the conclusion of our agenda today, that the January 24th meeting will be at the PCC campus. So, thank you to Eloy, who's not here, and our new acting superintendent president that is also in my district, and I'm very happy, because I think the meeting should be equitable. I think maybe one meeting every semester should be there. It's going to be upstairs in GG Building. I look forward to having people in the community come out and experience a board meeting. Hopefully, it's not going to be a six-hour meeting, but thank you for doing that. I appreciate it. And, that's my long report. Myra, thanks for the help. Thank you.
Trustee Otto?
That was a very good report.
Oh, thank you.
And, I'm going to try and make mine brief by limiting it to, to one, one particular topic that I've been ruminating about, and that I think we ought to at least consider, and that is, we all know that with this election, there's a great deal of fear on the part of students and what's going to happen when the new administration comes in, whether the DACA rules will be thrown out, whether people will have to worry about immigration people coming on campus and whatnot. Now, the UC chancellor, and the CSU chancellor, and the incoming chancellor for the community colleges, all set out a statement that said they're going to stand behind their students, and that there will be zero tolerance for this, and there, things are being worked out. And there have been a variety of, of other statements that have been made all over the country about this issue, but the fear is real. And, so I raised the question recently with the Community College League of California as to whether individual districts were doing anything about this, were they taking any kind of action? And, they said, "There's been no survey that's been done. They know that it's a generalized concern all over the state." I said, "I don't want to be a day late and a dollar short on this, but I think we should be vocal about this." And that what we ought to do is do some research, and at the next board meeting, agendize this item as to what this community college district might do about this issue, regardless of whether any other districts have done that or not. And, to that end, I would recommend that we have an ad hoc committee that I would be delighted to serve on, to bring that information to the board, so that this board is visible in terms of telling the students, as the governing board of the district, that we stand with them, that there are a variety of things that can be done that other colleges are doing. So, I'm going to make that a very strong recommendation, that we, we do that, and we don't dilly-dally about it, but we do it right away, because it's, I don't think it's too late. We don't have a new administration in place yet. I don't know whether this is, is going to make any real difference, except to our students. And I think the students will appreciate us thinking about this and coming out with a position on that. So, with that, since this is our last meeting before the holidays, I wanted to just wish everybody a happy holidays. I know it is a tough time, because the finals are here, and there's a lot of distractions that, that make this a difficult time of year for our students and everybody else. So, with that all, yield.
Okay, trustee Otto, would you want me to appoint you to chair this ad hoc committee? And trustee Malauulu, would you be willing to serve with trustee Otto?
I'd be willing to serve, but I know outside of this meeting, trustee Zia and I actually had a conversation about it, and I believe that she had planned on bringing it up during her board report also. So, in fairness to her, we, we actually had a conversation about this on Friday, and she had mentioned that she would bring it up. So, I, I would love to serve, but I think it would be more appropriate to allow her, since, you know, she had already mentioned it.
Okay.
I think, you know, allow her, her report, because she, she, I, we talked about it. She was, she had actually asked me some questions, and I didn't have the answer. So, thank you, though, I appreciate that.
I'd be delighted to serve, President Baxter, with trustee Otto.
Okay.
And I've got a pretty good file on this subject already, because I've...
I'm sure you did.
And if I may add, I will look to our vice president of Students Support Services, Dr. Greg Peterson, to aid the ad hoc committee with whatever they need. And, the other thing, I'm not sure if the board is aware, but our outgoing superintendent president, Oakley, did send two different, separate letters directly to our students on this issue. So, we have not really taken action, but I guess it is taking action by, by sending the email to all of our students. And so, if the board would like, I can have our board secretary send those to the board members, so you can see what was sent out to the students.
We receive them. Okay. Yeah. But, I mean, maybe you need to have them again. Okay.
President Baxter?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate for me to sit on that committee as well? I would like to, that ad hoc.
Because you're not elected, it would not be a violation of the Brown Act, so is that okay with you?
We'd just be careful about that, but of course. I mean, I would want to make sure that it's not a violation of the, of the Brown Act.
Really?
He is an advisory vote, he can cast an advisory vote. We'll have to, we'll have to double-check on that, but it's possible it's not, but we'll...
Mm-hmm.